Okay, I hereby call this meeting to order. Will stand and do the pledge of allegiance, please. Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do a roll call, please.
Wesley Pearson.
Here.
Katie Norton.
Here.
Here.
Fred the Prophet.
Here.
Isaac Williams.
Present.
Paul Beagle.
Present.
And Paul Keaton.
Here. We have everybody here. Let's go ahead and introduce the people online. And when your name's called, I would like to know if you're a speaker, if you wish to speak, and if you wish to speak, whether you wish to be on the proponent's side or the opponent's side. So we'll go with, what is that, Chris?
Yeah, so for the council's benefit and everyone's information, my name is Chris Crane. I'm with the firm of Barry Ellsner and Hammond, and I have been hired by the city to advise it on this matter through at least the local proceedings.
Thank you. Then we'll go to Wendy Neal. Do you wish to speak tonight?
No, sir, not tonight. Wendy Neal with Umatel Electric. I'm just here to observe.
Well, thank you. Welcome.
Thank you.
Do you wish to speak, Sam?
No, I'll just be observing tonight. Thank you.
You're welcome. Welcome. Sol Bodie. Do you wish to speak tonight?
Yes, I wish to speak on behalf of Umatel Electric Cooperative.
Ed Glenn. Do you wish to speak tonight? Having hearing nothing. Tommy Brooks, welcome. Do you wish to speak tonight?
Yes, good evening, Tommy Brooks. I represent UEC and I'll be participating in our presentation.
Okay, Kelly Doherty, do you wish to speak tonight?
Yes, I would. I would like to speak on the part of the appeal.
All right, thank you. Welcome. Cheryl Tallman, do you wish to speak tonight?
Yes, it's actually Jonathan Tallman. I'm actually just using my mom's phone, but same as Kelly Doherty's.
Okay, so Jonathan Tallman. Dory Griggs, do you wish to speak tonight?
No, I'm just listening in tonight. Thank you.
All right, welcome. And Mr. Fletcher, Fletcher Hogs, do you wish to speak tonight?
No, I'm just here to observe. Thank you.
You're welcome. Did I miss anybody else who would like to speak tonight? Sarah Mitchell. Sarah Mitchell, do you wish to speak tonight?
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. You would like to speak for whom?
Thank you, Mary Cooper. Yes, I'm an attorney with the Carrington Law Group, and I would like to speak on the side of the opponent.
Okay, Sarah Mitchell. Is there anybody else that I missed? Okay, having hearing done, we'll go right into our formal proceedings. The appeal hearing, Planning Commission decision of October 6, 2021 regarding land use appeal of ZP 21-031. And at this time, that's the purpose of the hearing. The rules that will be quite simple. I'm going to ask for three minutes for each person to speak, to state their case. The council will listen. Once my timer goes off, you'll need to wrap it up really quickly, and then we'll go to the next person, and I will call that person's name. Are there any questions about the rules of the hearing?
Mr. Chair or Mayor, Chris Crane for the, with Barry Ellsner. I just wanted to make sure that you plan, that the state law requires certain statements to be made at the beginning of a land use hearing like this. I want to make sure those were on your script. If not, I can provide those.
Okay, what's, which one, what is that?
So, for example, people need to understand that the city council's decision tonight must be based on the criteria, the applicable criteria in the city's land use regulations or comprehensive plan. Those are listed in the staff report. They were also listed in the planning commission's decision. So all testimony should be directed at those criteria or standards or other criteria standard that you think applies that is not listed. Failure to raise an issue at this point in the local proceeding precludes a person from appealing to the Land Use Board of Appeals on that issue. That's called the raise it or waive it rule. You have to raise an issue now or you can't base an appeal to Luba on that issue. Similarly, if you have any other concerns about the constitutionality or other legal concerns about this decision the city makes tonight, you have to raise them now or you can't appeal this decision in circuit court either. The order of testimony would be because the applicant has the burden demonstrating that the criteria met. The applicant generally goes first and then followed by public testimony, and then the applicant gets the final rebuttal. I think that's it. Just wanted to make sure that those issues were raised and covered before we launch into the hearing.
I appreciate that. That statement before really helps. Are there any questions about the statement that was just given? Okay, having hearing done, I would like to call for councillor, any councillors who wish to abstain from this public hearing. Okay, having hearing done, we'll go right into objections to the jurisdiction. Are there any objections to the jurisdiction of the council to hear this matter?
Greetings, Mayor. This is Tommy Brooks, and I will just go ahead and note, I would have made this part of our presentation, but we do object to this matter being in front of the city council. I can give you a brief basis for that, and that is that the, your code requires that any notice of appeal include a statement that explains the specific issues that are going to be raised on appeal. The only notice of appeal we've seen is a one-page document signed by Ms. Doherty that said she had standing, but as of today, we have yet to see any basis for the appeal. So on those grounds, we would request that you dismiss the appeal. If you decline to do that, we will just proceed in the normal course. Thank you.
All right. I guess I would like to know from our council on the, on what we need, on objections to jurisdiction. Did we just not follow, according to his opinion, we didn't follow the process? Is that correct or not correct?
That, you're correct. That's what he's arguing, but with all due respect to Mr. Brooks, I have a different opinion. I believe the city council does have jurisdiction. He's referring to a provision in your development code for appeals to the city council. And this is in the code at 4.1.500E6, and it says the notification and hearing procedures for an appeal to the city council should be the same as before the planning commission. But that, I interpret that word notification to mean public notice of this hearing has to be the same as it was before the planning commission, not that the appeal notice from Ms. Doherty has to list out specific issues. So I think we have a difference of opinion on whether or not that notice provision was complied with. Also, there's no question as to what the issues are currently before the board. So everybody, I think, is fully informed and up to speed on what the issues are, so nobody is harmed by any notice failure. So on those bases, I would encourage, I would advise the city council to go ahead with the hearing and reach a decision, and if people continue to object to the jurisdiction, we can deal with that later.
All right, thank you. So we'll go straight into the staff report.
Okay. This is the findings of facts for files EP 21-031. Yep, going to do Umatel Electric Cooperation.
Can you type it in chat to see if they can hear?
And it is for 230 kilovolt transmission line. The application date was submitted May 26, 21. Completion, completeness, the application was deemed complete on May 28, 2021. The subject properties include nine different properties within the city, seven of them, nine different properties, but seven of them within the city limits. The zoning is commercial service center sub-district. The proposed use, the application proposes to install two segments of 230 kilovolt electrical transmission lines, applicable criteria, Boardman Development Code, or BDC, 2.2, chapter 2.2, chapter 3.4, chapter 4.1.400. And the findings. Number one, this matter comes before the Boardman City Council as an appeal from a type-three planning commission decision in files ZP 221-031. In that decision, Planning Commission denied the appeals upholding the staff type-two decision which approved Umatel Electric Co-op UEC applications to develop the 230 kilovolt electric utility line or transmission line that will be constructed in part on multiple parcels within the city of Portland. As described, number two, as described in the application, the proposed project is needed to reliably accommodate electrical growth in the Portland area. The line will be rated at 230 kV and integrated into UEC's area grid. As further described in the application, UEC's electrical load in the Portland area has grown from 62 megawatts in 2009 to 260 megawatts in 2019, with forecasted growth to be above 535 megawatts by the end of 2029. This growth is driving the need for additional transmission facilities. UEC obtained a certificate of public convenience and necessity for the transmission line from the Oregon Public Utilities Commission. Number three, the transmission line is proposed to eventually cross nine tax lots in the city. The applicant previously obtained zoning permit for two of those tax lot. And the applicant originally requested zoning permit approval for the other seven tax lots. The applicant later withdrew its request for two of those tax lots, number 3205 and number 3302, MAP 4N2510. And the application was processed with the remaining five lots, tax lots number 402 and 403 of MAP 4 North, 25 East, 11, and 3201 and 3206 and 3300 of MAP 4N2510. Number four, the subject property is located in the Commercial District Service Center Sub-District. As such, it is subject to the standards in BDC 2.2.200, table 2.2.200B, lists private utilities as a permitted use in the zone. Number five, on July 26, 2021, the city's community development director issued a notice of the decision of approving the zoning permits. On August 10, 2021, First John 217 LLC and Jonathan Tallman appealed the decision to the Planning Commission. On September 8, 2021, the Planning Commission held with a notable hearing to consider the appeal. The Planning Commission left the written record open, one, until September 15 for all participants as part of the open record period, two, until September 22 to receive evidence and argument only for the rebuttal purposes in response to the evidence submitted during the open record period. And three, until September 29 for the applicant to provide a finally legal argument. The Planning Commission received no testimony or evidence objecting to the hearing process or the manner in which the record was left open. Number eight, each of the subject tax lots are commercially zoned and are in the Service Center Zone Sub-District of the Commercial District. Number nine, the proposed electrical transmission line is an outright permitted use in the Service Center Zone. BDC 2.2.200B states that the land uses listed in table 2.2.200B are permitted in the Service Center Sub-District, subject to the provisions of this chapter. Table 2.2.200, sub-B2B, lists the following as an outright permitted use: private utilities, examples given, natural gas, electricity, telephone, cable, and other facilities. Where a use is listed in table 2.2.2B, 200B, is subject to any additional standards. Beyond those in the BDC chapter 2.2.200, the table notes which additional standards apply. For private utilities, no additional standards are listed. Number 10, the Planning Commission find, found that UEC is a private utility that provides electrical service. The record demonstrates UEC as a private cooperative organized under Oregon by statute, chapter 62, and is registered as such with the Oregon Secretary of State. Number 11, the Planning Commission received testimony that UEC is not a private utility for purposes of BDC 2.2.200, either because it is a public utility as defined by ORS 7, chapter 7, 57.005, or because it is not the type of private utility contemplated by the code. The Planning Commission found that the statutory definition of public utility in ORS 757.005 that does not include cooperatives like UEC because they are expressly excluded from the definition under ORS 757.006. The Planning Commission also found that the code does not distinguish between types of private utilities and that all private utilities, natural gas, electricity, telephone, cable, and similar facilities are allowed outright or by right in the Service Center Zone. Based on the figures and other information in the record provided by the applicant, the transmission line satisfies applicable development standards for an electric utility in the Service Center Zone. Under BDC 2.2.200B, a land use that is listed in the table 2.2.200B, including public utility facilities, are subject to the standards of chapter 2.2. Further, BDC 2.2.200A states that the base standards of the Commercial District apply, except as modified by the standards of this sub-district. The Planning Commission finds that most of the standards in BDC chapter 2.2 and the base standards of the Commercial District, by their terms, do not apply to the proposed transmission lines. To the extent the standards apply, the standards are met as described below. Appellants argue that the standard, that the standards in BDC 2.1.150, sub-B sub-1, design of buildings and developments are not satisfied. However, BDC 2.2.150 sub-A lists the types of developments which BDC 2.1.500 sub-B sub-1 applies. Those developments include only commercial buildings, public and institutional buildings, and mixed-use buildings. No portion of the transmission line in the city includes a commercial, public, or institutional building. Although the code does not define building, BDC 2.2.150B describes a building as measured by enclosed floor area. The only structures that are part of the transmission line are utility poles. Because because utility poles do not include enclosed floor area, they are not considered building for purposes of BDC 2.2.150. Therefore, the Boardman Development Code 2.1.2.150B does not apply. 15 hour, appellants identified Boardman Development Code 2.2.140 sub-A maximum height as not being satisfied. That code provision regulates building height. As noted in the previous finding, no portion of the transmission line in the city includes a building, although the code does not define, does not define building in BDC 2.2.140. It states that building height is measured as vertical distance above a reference datum measured to the highest point in the coping of a flat roof or to the deck line of a mansion roof or to the average height of the highest gable of a pitched or hithrough. Utility line poles do not contain a flat roof, mansion roof, or hip roof. Therefore, there is no building height that can be measured in this context. And BDC 2.2.140 sub-A therefore does not apply. Number 16, the Planning Commission further finds that none of the development standards in BDC 2.2.120, building setbacks, and 2.2.130 lot coverage, or 2.2.16160 pedestrian amenities apply to the development of electrical transmission line by their terms. And 17, Boardman Development Code, chapter 3.4, contains additional development standards, some of which apply to utilities based on the figures and other information in the record provided by the applicant. The Planning Commission finds that development standards in BDC chapter 3.4 either do not apply to their terms to an electrical transmission line, or where they do apply, they are met. Only the specific development standards in dispute in this proceeding are addressed further below. 18, appellants identified Boardman Development Code 3.4.100 sub-A development standards as not being satisfied. BDC 3.4.100 sub-A imposes certain transportation standards. The only standard in BDC 3.4.100A that potentially applies to the proposed transmission line is the requirement that all development have, must have frontage or approved access to a public street. Here, the proposed development is a linear electrical utility line that does not involve a transportation component. However, the Planning Commission finds that the proposed development has approved access to a street. The applicant submitted easement documents demonstrating its right to access each easement area for the underlying parcels, each of which has access to the street. Further, the transmission line will result in a continuous corridor that can be accessed from multiple streets according to BDC 3.4.100A is satisfied. The appellants, 19, the appellants raise certain procedural issues with respect to the staff's initial approval of the zoning permits. For example, the adequacy and notice of the decision and the review of the application using site design review standards in Boardman Development Code, chapter 4.2. The applicant submitted material showing the extent of the development on each tax lot. The Planning Commission also held with a de novo hearing with an extended record period allowing participants to review and comment on the proposal without determining whether site design review is even required. In this instance, the Planning Commission finds that the criteria for site design review have been satisfied. Materials submitted by the applicant were sufficient to conduct site design review and the applicable criteria in Boardman Development Code, chapter 4.2.600 are satisfied because, as explained in other findings, the transmission line satisfies all applicable development standards in Boardman Development Code, chapter 2, relating to the Service Center Zone and in Boardman Development Code, chapter 3, relating to utilities. 20, the appellants presented several arguments to the Planning Commission relating to the approval of a road as part of the zoning permit. UEC's application does not propose a road. And the zoning per, UEC's application does not propose a road and approval of a road. The zoning permit determines only whether the transmission line is allowed use. Therefore, these arguments have no bearing on the Planning Commission's decision. 21, appellants make several arguments based on the assertion because UEC will need to obtain a zoning permit on two tax parcels owned by the appellants to complete the transmission line, that the transmission line is not aligned at all because it is not capable of transmitting electricity until the entire line is constructed. Planning Commission rejects this argument. There simply is no code provision that requires all permits for proposed linear facility to be obtained at the same time. Instead, the zoning permit is used to determine that the proposed use is allowed and under what conditions on the subject property. As proposed, UEC would construct the transmission line on the tax lots that are subject for this application, each of which allow private utility as a permitted use. Further, there is evidence in the record that UEC is in the process of acquiring the remaining two parcels for the proposed use, and the code does not prohibit UEC from seeking a zoning permit for the parcels to which it has already acquired a right while it continues its efforts to acquire rights to the remaining parcels. 22, finally, appellants assert transmission line as proposed is not allowed because it's not underground. Appellants' argument is not based on the Boardman Development Code and instead is based on Boardman Municipal Code, chapter 13.12, which is referred to as the Underground Wiring Control District. The Planning Commission find, found that BNCC or Boardman Municipal Code 13.2 or 13.12 is not part of the city's land use regulation and therefore do not provide approval criteria for this land use application. 23, moreover, even if Municipal Code, chapter 13.12, applies to this application, the Planning Commission finds that the Underground Wiring Control District governs only those wires that are in public rights play. Yes, the Municipal Code 13.12.030, the provision that prohibits, prohibits, prohibits overhead wires expressly stated, quote, "It is unlawful for any person to erect, construct, or maintain on or over the surface of any of the streets in the Underground Wiring Control District wires on, through, or by means of the electric current transmitted or used." Because this language regulates only utility lines and streets, it does not apply to private property away from streets. In contrast, Boardman Development Code does contain a provision regulating utilities on private property require some utilities to be underground. But those provisions apply only to subdivisions or not applicable here. 24, finally, even if the Underground Control Wiring District is relevant to the application, there is express exemption to the is relevant to the application, there is express exemption that allow allows UEC's transmission line to be constructed above ground. Specifically, Municipal Code thirteen point one two point one three zero E states that the underground requirements do not apply to feeder lines, which are defined as a line that serves the system but not a specific customer. The record demonstrates that the proposed transmission line is part of a system improvement that is designed to serve the overall system and not a specific customer. Accordingly, the provisions of Boardman Municipal Code thirteen point one two do not apply. Twenty-five, based upon the information in the record and finding set forth appeal, the appeal of the staff decision in CP twenty-one dash thirty-one is denied and zoning permits for tax lots four oh two and four oh three of map twenty four and twenty-five eleven and tax lots thirty-two oh one, thirty-two oh six and three thousand of map four and twenty-five ten in the service center zone are approved. On October fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, the city received an appeal application for CP twenty-one dash oh thirty-one to the city council from Kelly Doherty. On October twenty-one tw- twenty-one, public notice was posted online on the property and mailed to all interested parties and adjacent property owners exceeding twenty days before the hearing. On October twenty-third, twenty twenty-one, public notice was published in East Oregon newspaper exceeding the required twenty days notice required. And no other person standing commented before the October twenty eighth, twenty twenty-one deadline.
Okay, thank you Barry for the staff report. At this time, we'll go to the proponent's case. Which one would like to go first, Cole or Tommy?
This is Tommy Brooks, I will go first.
Okay.
Right, again, for the record, Tommy Brooks, I'm here representing Yumato Electric Cooperative. As you heard from the detailed staff report, this is the third time this application is being reviewed by the city. It's first by the staff, it got appealed to the planning commission, and now it's before you as the city council. And as I had noted in my objection to even needing to be here, it's our understanding that no other information has been submitted to the record since the planning commission approved the application, so everything you need to make this decision is already in the record that's in front of you. So to that end, I'm just going to say a few words. Cole Bodie is here, but really just to answer questions if you have them. But I'll just make the comments and then we can move on to the to the public comment piece. What I wanted to note is that the issue before you is is a zoning permit and that name is a bit of a misnomer because it's it's not really a permit in the traditional sense that a permit is needed to allow use. And as Barry noted, the the transmission line is an outright permitted use in the zone that that's covered by these applications. And in fact, there's not even a mention of the word zoning permit in the city's code. So really, this is just an internal way for the city to to note that the that the transmission line is allowed. And that's a lot different than, say, a conditional use permit where you're applying discretionary criteria and deciding whether or not you should actually move forward. And so as a transmission line that's allowed outright, the city staff correctly issued the permit. That decision was appealed to the planning commission and as you heard, all the issues that were raised, there were a lot, and the planning commission looked at this in great detail. It considered whether the use was allowed. It considered whether there were any other development constraints on on the on the use. And all of those issues were resolved in in UEC's favor. And and you can hear that in those detailed findings that that Barry read. So what we're left with is is we're kind of in an odd situation here because this matter was appealed to you without any additional information. We can maybe guess what the basis of the appeal is, but no one's provided that. The appellant that brought it to you is actually different than the appellant that that brought it to the planning commission. So, you know, we haven't seen any assertion that the planning commission got the law wrong. We haven't seen any assertion that the planning commission misunderstood the facts. It was just appealed, so maybe we'll get some of that detail later on tonight as part of the hearing and we will be up to respond to that if necessary in rebuttal. But with that, unless you have questions for me or for Cole, we will conclude our remarks and we'll rely on the information that's already in the record.
All right, thank you. All right, so well, that ends the proponent's case. We'll go to the opponent's case and we'll start with Kelly Doherty, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Kelly.
Okay, thank you. This is Kelly Doherty, six eight eight one two Wilson Lane, Boardman, Oregon. I appealed this decision based on several things. But what I really need to clear up and and maybe this won't take my part of the time is what exactly the lots are that we're speaking of. I know that the notice of the decision lists four oh two, four oh three, four oh five and thirty-two oh one, four lots were made in the decision. The staff report indicates something totally different and I believe that we need to change that back to what the decision was originally made on, which was the four tax lots. Of those four tax lots, four oh five does not have any ownership or any easement on it. I don't know what happened to the other tax lots, thirty-two oh six, three thousand, thirty-two eleven, and thirty-one hundred dropped off somewhere. We do know what happened to the Tallmans, thirty-two oh two and thirty-two oh five, of which one of the Tallmans wasn't even on the notice of the public decision. So it's kind of confusing and I hope that we're still talking about the four tax lots that the decision was made on and not what is in the the staff report. Also, the staff report says that the application was filed on May twenty-eighth. I'm looking at the zoning approval application right now, it was actually applied for on five nineteen twenty-one. At the top of that page, the date that was supposedly completed is left blank. There is no planning approval signature and there is no date on it. As far as looking to the tax lots to find those, there are two pages of tax lots, some of which aren't even in the city. So it's very confusing to me what we're doing here. The tax lots have changed every decision that has come through. And I guess that, you know, I'm holding to the fact that we're doing four oh two, four oh three, four oh five and thirty-two oh one, which was in the decision made by staff. I think then I'd like to go down further that they argue that the underground wiring district does not apply to the city properties that they're talking about because they say that they are private. I'd like to address the fact that Laura Lane is in the city. It's under the UBG, it is the city street, and it is covered under the underground wiring district. So is half of Olson Lane to the central line is city property. Those are all covered under the wiring district. He would like you to believe that this isn't covered, it's all on private property and it's not going over the tops of our streets. Well, it is, needs to be addressed. The development code addresses it. The development code addresses it, so does the municipal code, and so does our comprehensive plan. And he reads.
You'll need to start wrapping up.
Wow, okay.
Sorry.
Okay, well, I want to wrap it up with I I assume that the city staff report was done updated today and according to one ninety-seven, seven sixty-three, three dash my it was supposed to be done seven days in advance, so I would like to hold the record open so I can go through the staff report that was updated today. Thank you.
You bet. Thank you, Kelly. We'll go to the next person, Jonathan Tallman. You there, Jonathan?
Yes, yes, again, you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you. You got your agreement.
All right. We started this meeting with Chris Cream, the the special counsel that the city of Boardman has hired just for this. He brought up some great, you know, a great point, that this be done and done correctly. And that's one of the biggest issues that I have. I think that at one point, there was nineteen procedural errors of and Kelly just referred to one as far as like the staffing report being updated. There there are so many errors that have been done on this and in the past, Tommy Brooks from UEC has called this a static. And procedures and processes are in place and it is very important that they be followed correctly. Otherwise, if they're not followed correctly, then it the whole thing falls apart. And we have tried to bring this to the attention and to say, hey, let's deny this appeal and let's start from the beginning and start from scratch and do it properly. Also, I would like to note that UEC Tommy Brooks in the past at the planning commission referred to UEC as being approved from the Public Utilities Commission, which was a public company that got the Public Utilities Com- Commission certification. But then this is referred as UEC getting the underground wiring district as a private utility. So that they play it on one side as they're a public utility that has done their procedures correctly, but on the other side, oh, no way, that we're a private company that can do this and not follow the underground wiring districts. I mean, time and time again, we have shown many facts that that have been listed as far as procedures not being followed. And I would like for this to be denied, start from scratch so that we can do it correctly and do it from the beginning. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Jonathan Tallman. Sarah Mitchell. Sarah Mitchell, it's your, you are the next person. I see her, she's unmuted. Sarah Mitchell. Well. I'll give you, Sarah, are you there? Can you hear us? Okay. We'll be patient.
Hi, can you hear me now and see me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
I apologize, my computer decided to crap out on me. Thank you. My name's Sarah Mitchell, I'm an attorney with the Killington Law Group and we represent First John Two Seventeen LLC and the Tallman family. The Tallmans live on and run their business, the Farmer's Cup, on property adjacent to where UEC is asking you to approve its transmission lines. And UEC initially wanted your permission to put their line on the Tallman's property, but later had to withdraw that from their application because they didn't have the right to file an application under the terms of your code that only allow owners of property to apply for land uses on their property. So what you have before you now are pieces of a transmission line that will just be a non-functioning ISO. And it's one that, as you've heard tonight, UEC wants you to approve as a use permitted outright in the Commercial Service Center Subdistrict. And that's the issue I want to talk to you about and I want to be sure that you understand. Your code for a number of zoning districts allows, quote, "private utilities", example, natural gas, electricity, telephone cable, and similar facilities as an outright permitted use. And if you approve UEC's a hundred foot tall towers and high voltage transmission lines as this kind of private utility by interpreting it to include all public utilities regardless of their type or size, it will set a precedent. It's going to open the door to UEC, Bonneville, Idaho Power, Southern California Edison, all those guys to just lay their roots through Boardman and start building their high voltage power lines wherever they please. And why is that going to be? Because you will have decided that the code's allowance for these small private utilities is a blank check to high voltage transmission. So this is actually an opportunity for you to take a stand for the livability of your city. If you interpret private utilities to mean smaller individual distribution lines to homes and businesses, no one will be able to overturn you because that is a reasonable construction of your code and it's consistent with the context of your code. I know you've heard tonight about the underground wiring control district. And I'm not bringing that up because the issue isn't whether or not that district applies to UEC's application. Why I'm bringing it up is because it provides context for how you should interpret private utilities that are permitted outright in the Commercial Service Center Subdistrict.
Sorry, I'm going to have to wrap it up here very quick.
Okay. So we just asked that you deny UEC's application because it's not for use that's allowed in the city as used permitted outright. Thank you.
That, thank you, Sarah. All right, so that ends the opponent's case. We'll go to the cross-examination of opponents. Is there someone that wishes on the proponent's side to submit submit questions to the opponents? I guess that would be Tommy Brooks.
I do not plan to question any of the opponents. Thank you.
Okay. So we're to the public agencies. Public agencies. That would be you, right?
It'd be the Public Utilities Commission.
Okay.
But that was sort of completely separate process. We have not gotten anything from any of the other public agencies other than what we received from the applicant through the BDC.
Okay, thank you, Barry. Any rebuttal evidence by the proponent? Tommy, is there any rebuttal evidence you would like to present?
Yes, if if you don't mind, I'll just take a couple minutes to rebut the few things that were were stated.
Okay.
The first is it was a question about what lots apply. I don't think it's unclear at all. The the findings that the planning commission adopted, it actually applies to five lots in the city. So those, that decision was appealed, so all five of those lots are in front of you. The the other issue that was raised was whether or not the under, this is Mrs. Daughery's testimony, whether or not the undergrounding wire district applied. There's no dispute that it's not part of the development code. So it's not part of this land use proceeding. The only part of the development code that speaks to undergrounding is specific to subdivisions, which this is not a proposal for. So this is the exact argument and response that was made to the planning commission and the planning commission came to the right conclusion on that. For Mr. Tallman, I heard him say two things, one, that there are a bunch of procedural errors, but he did not identify any of those errors. Uh, but he did not identify any of those errors, so I cannot rebut that. Um, and I don't think it's sufficient just to say that there are errors without identifying them. Um, he also noted that because the Public Utility Commission uh, granted U E C a certificate of need. That that somehow makes U E C a public utility, uh, that's not correct. The P U C does regulate private utilities, not very often, but one of the few areas where they do besides safety. Is in the need to get a certificate of need, uh, so that's why U E C, who doesn't usually appear in front of the P U C. Uh, did need to show up in front of the P U C for that limited purpose, it doesn't change the nature that this is a private utility. Uh, there's no evidence in the record that indicates that U E C is anything other than a private utility. Um, and then finally, with respect to the comments from Ms. Mitchell, uh, what I heard her say was not. Read the code the way that the code is uh, written now, but how she wants you to interpret it. Uh, it's unambiguous that private electric utilities uh, are allowed in this zone. And she wants you to revise that to say. Private, some private electric utilities are allowed, but not all, that's not what the code says. The planning commission addressed this very issue um, and noted the unambiguous language of the code. Um, and so there's there's simply no basis to just reinterpret it um, it it right now as it came before you, so. Uh, with that, I think I've addressed all the comments that were made and um, we'll conclude.
Thank you, Tommy Brooks. With the rebuttal of the evidence, we now are at the power part where we close the hearing and uh, deliberate by council, so the. Public hearing is now closed. I guess that's the part where we discuss, is that correct? So if there is no discussion, then I'm looking for, I'm waiting for a motion. But if there is discussion, I'm willing to hear, we need our willing to hear. I think each of you have. It is, yeah, the three choices on how you're to make the motion. Which will give you the direct language for the motion.
Mayor Kiefer, may I speak?
Kelly, yes.
Um, I believe that I asked for the record to be left open um, under one ninety-seven, seven sixty-three, three one. Since the staff report was updated today, I was wondering if you were going to. Anything for that?
I actually wasn't, but Chris, do you have anything that you would like to say in regards to that?
Yeah, the statutes citing actually applies only to the first evidentiary hearing, which would have been before the planning commission. There is no statutory obligation for the city council to hold the record open at this hearing. You can always do so if you wish, but that would mean obviously uh, postponing the decision and you would also want to put some limits. On what sort of additional evidence or testimony might be entered into the record.
Thank you.
I guess my thoughts are that the staff report has changed. Um, it's supposed to be out seven days in advance and we haven't had any time except for today to go through it.
Um, Mr. Mayor, the the staff report was available seven days advance, there have been, it it, I don't know if there have been changes, to be honest with you, if they were minimal changes, it's it's. Doesn't change uh, compliance with the statute, there's nothing in the statute that require that prohibits amendments or modifications to the staff report once it's out, as long as it's not a wholesale change to the. To what was presented seven days in advance, and again, the staff report in this case was available seven days in advance.
Thank you. Alright, well, I'll make a motion. Get it rolling. Based on the testimony and evidence in the record, I move to adopt the finding stated November eighteenth, twenty twenty-one. Affirm the decision to move the application and deny the appeal. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion amongst us that we need to have? That includes Junior Drago. Okay, having hearing no discussion, we'll do a roll call, please.
Wesley Pearson. Jimmy Drago.
No.
Brenda Prophet.
Yes.
Isaac Williams.
Yes.
Paul Beagle.
No.
And Mayor Kiefer.
Uh, yes.
Okay, so that motion. Passes. Okay. So with that, that would I hereby adjourn the meeting.